I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Orange County School Board. This is such an exciting time of the year for us because not only is it graduation season, but we get to celebrate you, our students of Orange County Public Schools, for your tremendous accomplishments, and they really all come to fruition at this time of year. So I just want to share with you on behalf of the board how excited we are to celebrate you this evening. And I'm hoping these are Winter Park kids in the front row because otherwise I'm surrounded by Auburn War Eagles with those War Eagle ties. And I'm a Gator, so we can't have that. That's close enough. We got one right here. Ms. Cadel?
Actually, my comments were before you went into the final.
Okay, all right.
And my other comments were after you went into the final.
Okay. Terrific, terrific. Well, if everybody could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could remain standing one moment for a moment of silence. And Mrs. Cadel? I know you wanted to make a comment.
Yes, we lost a teacher this past week. She was a very special person, and I had known her since the 80s. And I'm going to read you something about her, and then I want you to remember her family in our moment of silence. Susan Hoover was a person who knew everyone and was someone everyone wanted to know. Her smile made her an interesting person to talk to, yet she was always interested in what other people had to say. She had many talents, but was one of the most giving persons I've known. Everyone at Hospital Homebound and Esteem Academy was touched by Susan's graciousness and willingness to become involved. While everyone else was coloring within the lines, Susan was creating her own picture, or no, her own mural outside the pages. She gave of herself to any person or cause in need. She never said, "We can't," but she always said, "Why can't we?" Truly, her legacy will live on in the lives of people, both children and adults she has touched. So if you would please remember her family members today and her teaching friends.
Ms. Cadel, thank you for those words. It reminds us of how blessed we are to have such gifted employees serving our students and our community. Thank you. Well, as I mentioned at the outset, with just a few weeks left in the school year, and this being the last school board meeting before the end of the year, can I get a woo-hoo, Mrs. Robinson? We thought we would pack the room with students, and we've certainly succeeded in that. And with us tonight are some of our star athletes and some of our star robotics champions. So we're going to start with them. We will begin with the Timber Creek High School and the amazing robotics team. They call themselves, this is a great name, Bang-a-Rang. I'd get in trouble if I called, oh, never mind, I'm not going to go there. It's a great name. We had a chance last week to see part of this team in action as our guest at our annual State of the Schools address, and they were a hit with absolutely everyone. In fact, they were a crowd stopper as folks were filing in. They all stopped to watch them and the robots in action. It was nothing short of amazing. It was very spectacular knowing that these students had not only designed the robots that we got to watch in action, but also programmed them and drove those robots. They recently attended the VEX Robotics World Championship in Louisville, Kentucky after their 2015 Florida state championship. And in the world competition last month, out of 450 teams in the programming skills challenge, their Team B placed 31st. And in the programming skills challenge, their Team A placed 44th, not just in the state of Florida, but in the entire United States and the entire world participating in those championships. And it's not over. There are also the 2015 VRC Florida State Championships Champions, the 2015 Battle in Brandon Tournament Champions, and the 2015 Space Coast VEX Robotics Skills and Programming Champions. Could we have the entire Timber Creek Robotics Team or Bang-a-Rang stand and let us recognize them? And they are led tonight by a husband and wife, Team Jennifer and Alan Kane from Timber Creek, and also by their principal, Gabriel Barrio. Principal Barrio and Mr. and Mrs. Kane, please stand and let us recognize you. We have so much to be proud of in Orange County Public Schools. Not only is there success in the classroom as exhibited by the Timber Creek Robotics Team, but we also have experienced tremendous success on the fields of sport this year, on the track, in the water, and on the court. In fact, this room is chock full tonight of star athletes from across our district. We are going to highlight some of the teams and their sports, and we're going to call out teams individually. And then we'll have everyone come forward at the same time along with the robotics team for us to shake your hands and congratulate you personally. And then we're having certificates sent directly to your schools as well in recognition of your accomplishments. So let's start with Winter Park High School. Could we have the girls' cross-country team and coaches stand to be recognized? And I'd like to ask you all to stand for a moment. Continue standing as I recognize you. They are our 4A state champions in cross-country. This year, they also set the third-best team score in state history as well as the third-fastest team average in state history. They also won an individual state championship title. It went to Winter Park's Raffaela Gibbons. Raffaela, raise your hand. She was the individual state champion in cross-country and also in track, the 3,200-meter run champion for the state of Florida this year. Which also brings us to the girls' 4x800-meter relay team, also from Winter Park High School. And that team included as well Raffaela Gibbons. And congratulations on that championship as well. Do we have anybody else here from the track team? Let's have the track team also stand and allow us to rec... They're all here, okay. And I'm going to share with you all, I'm a cross-country track dad. And my daughter runs for Boone High School. And I have to share with you all that it is absolutely crushing and intimidating to even get out there on the cross-country track and see any one of our high schools try to compete with these girls because they are remarkable. Most high schools, and I'm going totally off-script now, but most high schools have one or two runners that really just excel and are of state championship caliber. This team, what's so awesome is they have not one, not two, but they have five or six girls that really just set the pace for the entire field, at every meet, at districts, metros, all the way up to region and state. So let's give them a big hand because they're nothing short of... Thank you, ladies. We are also joined tonight from Winter Park High School by the members of another dynasty, their competitive cheerleading team. Can I have their competitive cheerleading team and coaches please stand? These young ladies are national champions, FHSAA regional champions, metro champions, and state champions. Congratulations to the Winter Park Competitive Cheer Team. And I'm going to go off-script again. How many state championships have you all won in cheerleading at Winter Park? 14. Ladies and gentlemen...
They are also world champions.
How many world championships have you won?
This year.
Well, if you were to open a Webster's Dictionary to the word dynasty, I think you'd see the pictures of these young ladies. That's nothing short of remarkable. Congratulations. And we cannot forget tennis. Winter Park High School's are double state champions in both the team and overall categories. And we're joined tonight by Nina Kumar and Will Smirk. I hope I pronounced your names right, Will and Nina. Can you all stand and allow us to recognize you as well? And by the way, we're going to brag a little bit more here on Will. He is also a Winter Park High School valedictorian. Congratulations, Will. We are also joined tonight by Winter Park High School's Special Olympics Unified Basketball Team. Can they please stand for us to raise our hands? If you all could remain standing one moment, let me brag on you a little bit. This team went to the Final Four Special Olympics Basketball Tournament at the Lakeland Civic Center and brought home the first-ever state championship title in this sport. Congratulations. And this team is also part of Project Unify, which is an education-sports-based strategy that engages students with and without intellectual disabilities while creating a community of acceptance for all. We are so proud of the role models you are for our entire Orange County Public School community. Congratulations to you all. All right, Ms. Cadel, you've got a lot to talk about tonight, don't you? Because we're also joined tonight by the Winter Park High School Boys and Girls Crew State Champions. Can I have them stand? All right, I know they're just chomping at the bit to say this after hearing from the competitive cheerleaders. How many state championships have you all won? 34. I didn't even have to read my script. They knew it. That's awesome. 34 state champions. That's remarkable. This is the fourth year in a row that they have won the state championship. And this is a feeder program for crew programs throughout the United States at the college level. And I know how very, very hard you all work. I know a bunch of Winter Park crew parents and crew parents at other schools. And I know you're up at the crack of dawn and out there rowing hard year-round. So you didn't get there by anything but hard, hard, hard work. And you should all be very, very proud. And this is a legacy you'll carry with you throughout your lives. Congratulations.
Excuse me, Mr. Sublet.
Ms. Cadel?
It's my understanding that one of these fine young men is also a valedictorian, so raise your hand.
Raise your hand. And I do believe they win the Best Rest Award tonight, so congratulations, guys. Thank you. All right, it's time to spread the cheer to some other schools. And from Olympia High School, we are welcoming Ariana Beltran, girls' tennis individual champion, and Mark Rodier, track and field individual shot put state champions. Can you both stand? And Macon, you're being very gracious. I think I mutilated your last name. It's Rodier, isn't it? Did I get it right? That was good. And you know, I'm so glad to have both you all here and allow us to recognize you because I am a giant sports fan, and I've been reading both your names. I follow track and field because my daughter runs track and field, and I love to follow tennis. And you've had a remarkable career as well. So let's give it up for Macon and also for Ariana. Congratulations. From Lake Nona, we are joined tonight by Yavier Lopez, state wrestling champ at 106 pounds. Yavier? Going to brag a little bit on Yavier. I had a brother who played major college football, and he wrestled one year in high school. And he was a very good football player. And he said, "Bill, it's the hardest thing in my life I've ever done. I couldn't do it more than one year." So your accomplishment is nothing short of remarkable either. And thank you for all the hard work you've put in. You should be extremely proud, Yavier. And from Colonial High School, we are joined by Armani Wallace, state champion triple jumper, and Marshall Contra, state champion weightlifter at 139 pounds. Armani, how far did you triple jump? Wow. Can you imagine that? 51 feet. That's pretty incredible. Are you going to triple jump in college? That's awesome. That's awesome. And what's your total lift there, Marshall, in the 139-pound category? Wow. And he's in the 139-pound category. That's incredible. Armani and Marshall, congratulations. We're very, very proud of you. And I wish I had brought my second daughter tonight because this is a sport she wants to pursue, and what a great role model. We're joined tonight from University High School, Madeline Palmer, state champion individual girls' wrestling for the second year in a row. Madeline, where are you? Can you stand and let us recognize you? Well, it's a good thing my daughter didn't come. Well, send word out to Madeline. We're very, very proud of her. She is a wrestling champion for the state of Florida for the second year in a row. From Oak Ridge High School, we are joined by another name I've been reading in the paper, Shrika Barnett, girls' 400-meter state champion. Shrika? What's your PR in the 400-meter hurdles? Oh, in 400 meters? Oh, what's your PR in that? How much? Wow. That is blazing. Congratulations, Shrika. We're very, very proud of you. Are you running in college? Where are you going to run at? All right. Going to be a Gator. I'm glad we stole one away from the Seminoles. Good for you, Shrika. You must be brilliant because you're going to UF. All right, from Dr... Yeah, no, no. I'm surprised I didn't get any tomahawk chops out there. I'm sure I will. All right, from Dr. Phillips High School, the boys' track team with individual championships to Christopher Bratch on the 800-meter relay, along with teammates Amari Hogan, Mike Macon, and Jamari Smith, and also the 200-meter state champion, Alvin Bryant. Can I have all of you all stand and allow us to recognize you? Which one is Alvin? What was your state-winning time in the 200-meter? Wow, that's incredible. Where are you running college track, are you? Okay, are you a junior or senior? Well, the Gators could use a good 200-meter champion. I probably just violated NCAA rules, but you know what? What the hey? Well, congratulations, gentlemen. We're very, very proud of you. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, and this is one that we let get away from Boone High School, is from the Dr. Phillips Wrestling Team, Dylan Meeks at 220 pounds. He is the individual state champion. Dylan actually went undefeated at 34-0 after moving up a weight class from last season. Dylan Meeks, where are you? Here tonight? Dylan is from a long line of illustrious athletes in his family. And I've been following you, Dylan, for the last two or three years. And are you going to wrestle or play football or a different sport in college? Football. Where are you going to play? Well, again... You know, I'm not going to get the Gators on probation, so I won't say a word. But congratulations, Dylan. We're proud of you. So, wow, what a year. All of you, I know all of your parents are so exceptionally proud of you. And you know what? I'd like to recognize the parents in the room because none of you all got there on your own. You had great parental support or support from your home, from your coaches. So can I have all the parents in the room stand and let us recognize you as well? And all of you accomplished these feats also with terrific coaching. So can I have all of our coaches around the room tonight stand and let us recognize our coaches? Thank you for being such great mentors for our young men and women. And with that, Ms. Cadel, let me turn it over to you.
Well, and I don't want to steal your thunder, but I see a lot of principals out here, and I see the athletic director of Winter Park High School, Mike Brown. So could we have all the principals and if they're athletic directors here? Because you all put in a tremendously number of hours mentoring these young people. So can we recognize you too? Okay, I always get blamed for wearing my orange and black, and I bleed orange and black. And you guys sometimes give me a hard time because I also can bleed University and East River. But tonight, it's Winter Park. And Mike Brown just told me, this is just in, of their 13 teams that participated in spring sports, all of them, let me repeat, all of them, had a 3.0 or better grade point average on the teams. So not only are you guys great athletes, but you're also great scholars. Congratulations. Also, one thing I get to do every year is Mr. Smith and his team are so accommodating to Leadership Winter Park. And about two years ago, we decided to change things up at Winter Park when we brought the future leaders in. And they were in the playoffs, I think, the first year we did this. So we had the pep band playing the fight song when they got off the bus. And then we had the cheerleaders with their pom-poms welcoming them to campus. And then we took them into the auditorium. And the cheerleaders are just starting to practice their routines to go to their competitions. And so we have them do their, they do a portion of their routine. And it is one of the highest-rated sessions of all of the Leadership Winter Park sessions because they are amazed at what great athletes and how strong these young women are. And we follow it up with the a cappella groups that just continue from Winter Park High School to continue to win all kinds of accolades. And I just want all of you from Winter Park to know that Leadership Winter Park thinks Winter Park High School is a really cool place to go. So thank you for being such a great role model for the Winter Park community.
Ms. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have to say, I really needed this tonight. What a wonderful evening. This year has been a stressful year in a lot of different ways, but this is what it's all about, seeing our young people succeed. And I just wanted to say, thank you for putting this together, Mr. Chair, because this is wonderful. I do have to give a shout-out. There is an AP here from Timber Creek more than one... Oh, okay, Nancy Linkswiler? She was taking Dr. Barrio's place, but I wanted to... Oh, okay, way in the back. Thank you for being here, your team. For robotics, if you've never been to a robotics, do you call it meet or match or competition? Well, I have been, but you know, you wouldn't know it, I guess. It's incredibly exciting. I mean, you know, you stated their name, they're flamboyant with their costumes and colors, and very ser... Well, you call them uniforms probably, but very, very exciting, just very exciting. The board members, if you haven't had a chance to go, when's the next one? I went to one at UCF. So is not until next year. Well, let us know because we all need to go, and it's just, you've got to go. So congratulations for being so great, so proud of you. Colonial High School, too, you guys rock. Great to be a Grenadier. Thank you. These are the students that I represent in District 2. And of course, Lake Nona High School Wrestling, again, another exciting sport. But for all of the teams, all of the students, so proud of you. We do get a little competitive up here with our schools, right? So next year, Colonial, Timber Creek, and Lake Nona, we're going to be like all over here, okay? And I just have one question. In cheerleading, who do you compete with on a world level? What country, other... How exciting. Well, I know it's so athletic with all the tumbling and the gymnastics, but fantastic. So, okay, Colonial, Lake Nona, Timber Creek.
They also show it on ESPN. That's how popular it is. It's not, I'm not sure you're on the main channel, but you're on one of them. But they show them on ESPN.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Who would have thought you'd come to a school board meeting and get a little trash-talking? In a good way. All right, Dr. Jenkins, I better stop while I'm ahead. Dr. Jenkins? Mrs. Gordon? I'm going to.
So I certainly want to add my congratulations to these fine young people as well as the one that'll be read in just a moment. I tell you what is most impressive. We always find that so many of our students who participate in extracurricular activities such as robotics or sports or any other activity quite often are just phenomenal students as well, which means you're pretty well-rounded, for high school students especially. We know that means you work long hours after practice to get your academics taken care of. So I want to personally congratulate all of you. I know you have proud parents here, but we're just as proud of you sitting up here. Well, maybe, I have to give parents credit. They're probably a little bit more proud. But we are incredibly proud of you. Want to personally congratulate you as well. To all of our coaches, athletic directors, folks who get paid small stipends but work tremendously long hours, not just building skills and talent among our students. If you're sponsors of various clubs, you also build character in our young people. And so I want to commend you and thank you as well, for all of you for supporting our students.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And we do have one other state champion here tonight. And we saved her for last because we wanted to make sure we gave her some special recognition. That's Victoria Castle, the Freedom High School. And she is the girls' state weightlifting champion. Victoria, where are you? Can you stand and let us recognize you? Victoria, what was your best lift? Wow. That's incredible. Congratulations, Victoria. All right, Vice Chair Gordon, bring us in for a landing.
Okay, thank you so very much. I think Dr. Jenkins brought us in for the landing, but you really took us higher and higher. It is, I mean, I enjoy seeing Winter Park come because they always come so dressed and super sharp. And I just think that that always... always sets the pace. But every single one of us up here, Apopka, I mean, Boone, all of the schools, all of the board members that you see represented here today, and Mr. Sumlin gets to represent all. So that is unbelievable, and I just think that's awesome. But we are very, very competitive up here, and I think we all have felt the glow of a state champion, our national champion of something. And Ms. Cato tries to lead the way, but I want you to know that you all have really made us proud, and tonight is your night. I mean, that's why you're on the front row. But right on the second row, coming up behind you, all right, is none other than, like they stated, I'm just so proud of Sarika Barnett for the girls' 400 meter state champion. That is just unbelievable. I just wanted to just stand again, because, I mean, just stand up, baby, because look at this. This, you all know, and, and the reason why I just say it, that's right, future. They always know, usually, we're coming up on the, you know, Jones and Oak Ridge, we're just kind of trailing in. But after a while, we have done extremely well on this board and representing the board. And I think we all are very, very proud of you. So tonight is your night. Give yourselves a round of applause. You deserve it. You have made us proud.
Let me close this portion of our meeting by, on a more serious note, saying again, congratulations. I think I speak for this entire board when I say that we are equally proud, if not even prouder, of your academics and of what great role models you are. What makes our schools great are to have role models such as you in our schools each and every day, setting an example for your fellow students. So congratulations. You should all be very proud. I know the board, this is going to be a mass handshaking, but we want to shake all of our state champions' hands. So what we're gonna do is we're going to pause and ask you all to come up if you're one of our students that we've recognized tonight. Let us shake your hands. And then go on and just filter out the back. We know it's AP testing week this week, and we know a lot of y'all probably have AP exams this week as well. So thank you and congratulations again. And the coaches. All right, let's go on and get going with the business portion of our meeting. First of all, let me make a couple of preliminary announcements. Any individual who would like to address an item on our consent, or our non-consent agenda, may do so by completing a yellow form that you can get from the board table by Mr. Morgan, the gentleman down here at the far left-hand side of the dais. I will call you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before the board. At that time, you'll have three minutes to address the board, and we'll ask you to start with your name and address, please. Please know that we have a monitor in front of us, so I think we're going to have some presentations tonight. If we're not looking at the screen behind us, it's not because we're ignoring it, it's that we're watching what you're watching on the screen on the monitor in front of us. We do have, I believe, do we have any administrators to recognize tonight? Dr. Jenkins? Okay, we don't have any newly appointed administrators, so let's go right into our agenda changes. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to our agenda?
We are removing item 1405 and 1406, I'm sorry, 1406 and 1407.
Okay, I find cause to amend the agenda as requested. Can I have a motion? It's been moved by Ms. Gould. Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as suggested, please signify by saying aye. Aye. I'll oppose nay. Should the agenda adopted. All right, we do have two public hearings tonight on two rezonings. So let me turn it over to you, Dr. Jenkins, for the rezonings.
Thank you, Chairman. The first one is item 301 on our agenda, as Dr. McGowan is stepping to the podium. That is for property 81. It's an elementary school in the Southwest Learning Community School Board Member District 5, Ms. Kat Gordon. Dr. McGowan?
Thank you and good evening. With me this evening is Ms. Showalter, and we will be bringing to you several rezonings. Before we present them, I'd like to take a moment to clarify our terminology for everyone. The school board policy lays out a procedure to follow when an area is discussed for rezoning. To help everyone when an area is discussed, we have distinguished between rezonings that open a relief school, or one that involves a select group of students, or one that does not involve students. And names have been given to each. If there are no students involved, we call it a technical rezoning. If it's neighborhoods with students involved, we call it a targeted, and a relief school is just called a rezoning. This evening, we bring to you technical, targeted, and a relief school rezoning. The timeline for this set of rezonings is the page that's being displayed now. Pupil Assignment held a community meeting on Thursday, February 19, and a rural development workshop on March 4th, I'm sorry, March 5th, both here at the ELC. The rezoning we'll look at first is one for a relief school, 81ESW5. As Dr. Jenkins stated, the 81 is the property number, E is for elementary, the SW is for the Southwest Learning Community, and 5 is the school board member district, Ms. Gordon. At the rural development workshop on May, March 5, staff was directed to advertise the option that's in your packet. Let me orient you to the map. The red lines are currently, the current elementary school lines. The areas in shaded colors are the proposed zones. As we get to them, we'll discuss them. And the schools involved with this rezoning are Tangelo Park, Millennium, Palmetto, Shingle Creek, and Catalina, and our new school. The superintendent's staff recommendation, the area in orange is Tangelo, the proposed Tangelo Park, and the area in pink above it would be the Millennium. Area in yellow would be the new school zone. The area in blue, Catalina. Purple is Palmetto, and the green would be Shingle Creek. On this map, you have a text box with specific data for the schools. You have the school name, the permanent program capacity, the current number of students residing in that shaded area for each school, and the projected number of students for 2016, when 81ESW5 will open. If we look at Tangelo Park, the permanent program capacity is currently 412. However, in 2016, the school will be reopened with the capacity of 650. Not reopened, I should say it's being rebuilt with a capacity of 650. Presently, the number of students that reside in the orange area is 602, and the projection for 2016 would be between 590 and 630. Millennium, the permanent program capacity is 732. The current number of students residing in that pink area is 773, and the projection for 2016 is 760 to 800. For our new school, the permanent program capacity is 830. Currently, there's 879 students residing in that area, and the projection for 2016 is 870 to 920. Catalina in the blue, the permanent program capacity is 756. It currently has 701 students within its zone, and projected for 2016 is 680 to 720 students. For Palmetto, currently, the, I'm sorry, the permanent program capacity is 1,022. Currently in that area, 1,052 students reside in that area, and projected for 2016 is 1,040 to 1,080. Shingle Creek in green, the permanent program capacity is 697, and currently, there are 933 students in that area in the green, and projected for 2016 is 920 to 960. Our next page, the next two pages actually show you additional demographic data. The first column is your school and the program capacity. The second column is the enrollment from October of 2014, and the racial breakdown of white, black, other, and the percent of non-Hispanic, Hispanic. If we look at the residing number of students currently, it's 701. The next column is what we saw on the other page, along with the demographics for race, which is our second line, and ethnicity, which is the third. The next column is our free and reduced meals. C stands for the current population, and the P is proposed. The next two columns show us our students who score at Level 1 and 2 on FCAT, both in math and reading. And you also have the current and the proposed. The next column shows the percentage of students that are English language learners. And our last column is the percent of students that are in our exceptional education program. Our first three schools are Catalina, Millennium, and Palmetto. And if we go to our next page, we have Shingle Creek, Tangelo Park, and the relief school. I'll give you time to review. We have received no input for this rezoning since our rural development workshop. Dr. Jenkins?
We are certainly willing to answer any questions. Like to remind the public that board members have dealt with these rezonings through workshop and through individual meetings extensively at this time, Chairman.
All right, before I go to Mrs. Gordon, because this is her district, let me ask, are there any members of the public who have shown up tonight who would like to speak to this proposed rezoning? No? Okay. Let me also explain to any member of the public who's here tonight or may be watching at home, by the time we get to this point on the school board, we have already had a rural development workshop and have considered these rezoning proposals and have weighed in. So if there seems to be an absence of a lot of dialogue by the board, that's because we've thoroughly vetted it by the time it gets to this level and consider the proposed changes. Mrs. Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think the entire board is in agreement with you. We've been able to have the rural development, and we also had input from the, the community, and then Dr. McGowan and her staff. They have been working extremely hard with all of these schools. I think Dr. Janice Choice is out in the audience, because later on, we're gonna be honoring her. And I think she probably might be excited to see what's happening there, even with the Pine Lock and what's coming up there, and all of the other schools. The Palmetto School, it puts us back with the number of students residing within that area, over 1,000. The Millennium, if you've been out in that area, and most of the board members, they know where that is, that's over 1,000. The Shingle Creek, over 1,000. And the Tangelo, they are elated that they will be able to move their numbers up. As a matter of fact, we're supposed to be having a couple of meetings again with them. They're going into their 100% on the building of their new school. So we're in the progress with Mr. Morris and his staff in building the new, the new, the brand-new Tangelo Park Elementary, and that's going to boost them up tremendously, in which we're going to be excited about that. The new school, I'm gonna ask Mrs. McGowan if she would take a moment and just tell where the 81ES Southwest in District 5 is, because a lot of people may not know where that is, but if they go in that vicinity and within that area, they will see that buildings are going, I mean, it's actually going on. Also, before she does that, I wanted to mention about Catalina. I'd really like to thank Dr. Jenkins and her staff, especially her area superintendent, in taking a look at Catalina and bringing that back to us, because those enrollments are very low. And I think that this board saw fit, so that we will be able, working with Mrs. Colbert's community, and even with several other community members of this board, to try to enhance and bring up the number of students that the Catalina School will have. So the Catalina is a beautiful, brand-new facility. Millennium is an awesome, brand-new facility. Palmetto, we're going to be doing more work on that. But Ms. Grace Elias was principal at that particular time when that school was built, and it is beautiful. But however, Mr. Morris is going to be doing some work on that. The Shingle Creek is brand-new. Dr. Jenkins and several board members, along with our chairman, we will be doing, as well as even watching the shows that's not on the air, but we will be doing our dedication of that school. So I do want you to know that all of the schools that you're looking at are brand-new. The Tangelo is in the process right now of design. We were able to see that design at a couple of meetings last month. So if you would explain where it is and why we are doing what we're doing with these particular schools, okay?
Be happy to. If you go to the corner of John Young Parkway and Millennium Boulevard, you'll see a set of apartments going up at this point. And if you just go to the next property over to the west, that's the new school site for 81. And the reason we're doing this is in that area, you have approximately 5,000 elementary school students at this time.
And who would have believed it? And that's something I did. I told Dan Buckman that long time ago, I did, I did. Because we want you to know that District 5 is thriving and growing, and I do want to commend this board, because practically every school in school board District 5 is almost built. And the students are housed in it, and most of them are becoming overcrowded. So we're working on that. So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it back over to you. I am definitely, as a representative for this particular community, do you want me to move that? I was gonna turn it back to you and listen to other board members if they wanted to comment. But thank you for that, Ms. Flynn.
Why don't you go ahead and make the motion at this time, Mrs. Gordon, then we'll go to the other speakers.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the superintendent and staff recommendation and move forward with the, not the building of the schools, but our rezoning of these targeted schools.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Gordon, and seconded by Ms. Colbert, that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for the rezoning of school 81-E-SW-5. Mrs., or Ms. Moore?
I just wanted to say, to congratulate staff, Dr. Jenkins, on the numbers, because I had expressed some concerns at the work session about having a little extra capacity, because what I have found in the last few years is, is the buildings are so beautiful and the state-of-the-art technology, that we end up with students coming back from all over the place, places that we couldn't have even calculated. And so I'm just really happy to see that there's some extra room in some of these facilities, so that we don't have to open with portables, because unfortunately, I have a few, and Mrs. Robinson's nodding, that in the very first year, we had to add portables. And I know that the community doesn't understand, and it takes you a little while to explain to them with glass eyes and all these different factors. And so I just wanted to congratulate you for, at this point, so Mrs. Gordon does not have to hear anyone fussing about portables. Hopefully, we'll make it through a year. But Mrs. Gordon, you probably will have some, because they just love those new buildings.
We don't mind. We just want children. I barely, you know, my community hardly ever fuss about overcrowding, because I think Millennium was just totally overcrowded. You could see Pine Lock and so many of them, but they just accept the portables, and they're beautiful. And you know, we just opened Pine Lock. You know, Janice helped us to get that started, but we just opened Pine Lock, and we already have portables, okay, out there. Catalina, we did get rid of the portables there, but the enrollment is going to go back up. So there may be a possibility, Ms. Moore, that we may have to put the portables back. But as long as we get the children, it keeps the school alive. And the public has invested so much money to make these facilities state-of-the-art. And we are recipients of them, and we're just excited, Mr. Chairman, and board members, and thank you, Madam Superintendent and staff.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded that we approve the superintendent's recommendation. Let me, let me just make two brief comments. One, we have some iconic OCPS educators in the audience tonight with us. And I'm just proud that I'm a board member of a district where Orange County Public Schools is the first choice of families in this community. And that, that's spoken to by the fact that you do have full schools, and we all have full schools in all of our districts. So that's quite a tribute to Orange County Public Schools and our educators who have, who have... So that's quite a tribute to Orange County Public Schools and our educators who have created that environment. And I also want to congratulate Mrs. Gordon. Her community needs to know that she is a Ferris, Ferris advocate for the schools in her district. And the reason that this renovation program has been completed or is nearing completion for the schools in her district, and frankly, has been accelerated, is because of her advocacy. So I'm not sure always that your community recognize, when I call you the Sasha Ferris of the Orange County School Board, it's real, it's not just a joke.
Look at the group here.
With that, well, they know, they know you, Mrs. Gordon. They know of what I speak.
But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. With that, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Jenkins, we're now on 3.02, which is the various technical and targeted rezoning.
Thank you, Chairman. That's plenty introduction. Again, the board has been workshopped and individually met with to explain these targeted and technical rezonings. So take it away, Dr. McGowan.
Ms. Sherwalters is going to walk us through the first step.
Our first technical rezoning is regarding Kayleigh's Ridge subdivision, and it involves, the proposed changes will involve elementary level and middle school level. The subdivision is located in the southern part of the county, right at the Orange-Ozawa County line. The red lines on the map represent the current elementary boundary zones, and the green line, which you can't really see because they align with the elementary, are the middle school lines. The area highlighted in yellow represents the Kayleigh's Ridge subdivision. Kayleigh's Ridge Development is expected to have 124 homes. From those homes, 25 elementary school students and 13 middle school students are expected. Our next map shows the proposed zones at the elementary level. The green area represents the proposed zone for Tangelo Park Elementary School. The purple area represents a proposed zone for West Creek Elementary. Input was received from one family in support of this rezoning. The recommendation is to move Kayleigh's Ridge subdivision from Tangelo Park Attendance Zone to West Creek Elementary Zone. Dr. Jenkins?
Chairman?
Thank you. Board members, questions, or comments about this proposed, these proposed rezonings? No? All right. Seeing none, then, is there any member of the public who has come to testify tonight as to the proposed rezonings just described? All right. Can I entertain a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Gould, seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? Comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted. Nice job. Thank you.
Our next map shows the proposed zones at the middle school level for the same technical area, Kayleigh's Ridge subdivision. Our green area shows the proposed zone for Freedom Middle School, and the purple area is the proposed attendance zone for Hunter's Creek Middle School. This development could generate 13 middle school students. No input was received regarding this rezoning. Our recommendation is to move Kayleigh's Ridge subdivision from Freedom Middle School Attendance Zone to Hunter's Creek Middle School Attendance Zone. Dr. Jenkins?
Okay. All right. Has any member of the public come to testify on this proposed technical rezoning? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve this proposed rezoning? It's been moved by Ms. Moore, seconded by Ms. Colbert. Is there any discussion or debate of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted.
Our next technical rezoning is regarding the Mont Hallett subdivision. This subdivision is located in the Apopka area. The dark green lines represent the current middle school boundary lines. Currently, the subdivision is divided between Apopka Middle School Attendance Zone and Wolf Lake Middle School Attendance Zones. The majority of the subdivision is in the Apopka Middle School Zone. The southern part of the subdivision is planned for 15 homes and could generate two middle school students. There are currently no students residing in the yellow area in the southern part of the subdivision. Their recommendation is to move the southern part of the subdivision, along with the adjacent area, to Apopka Middle School. Our next map, this one, shows the proposed zones. The green area represents a proposed zone for Wolf Lake Middle School. The purple area represents a proposed zone for Apopka Middle School. Our recommendation is to move the southern part of the subdivision, along with the adjacent area, to Apopka Middle School. No input was received regarding this rezoning. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. Is there any member of the public who has come to testify on this technical rezoning? Seeing none, can I entertain a motion to approve it? It's been moved by Ms. Moore, it's been seconded by Ms. Gould. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those, Ms. Moore?
I just have to be happy that, in this area, that the citizens seemingly, at this point in history, are happy to go to any of those three middle schools, and I've not always seen that. So it's time to celebrate. Thank you.
And thank you for your leadership on these rezonings here, Ms. Moore. Many of them are in your area. So thank you. All right. Everybody understand the motion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted.
Our next technical rezoning is regarding the commercial area on Arkusie Road. This technical rezoning involves middle school and high school boundary lines. The red line represents the current elementary boundary line. The green is for middle school, and the blue is for high school. The area in yellow is the commercial area, and there are no students residing at this time there. Our next map shows our proposed middle school zones. The purple represents a proposed Odyssey Middle School Attendance Zone, while the green represents a proposed Lake Nona Middle School Attendance Zones. No students reside in the commercial area. Our recommendation is to move the commercial area from Lake Nona Middle School to Odyssey Middle School Attendance Zone. No input was received regarding this rezoning. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. Is any member of the public come to testify as to this technical rezoning? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Flynn, would you like to make a motion or a comment on this one?
Yes, thank you, because this is, as they said, there are no students living in that zone. It's really pretty industrial and commercial. So I make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation on this zoning.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Flynn. It's been moved, it's been seconded by Ms. Colbert, seconds that motion. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted.
Our next map is the same commercial area, and it shows the proposed zones at the high school level. The green area represents the proposed Attendance Zone for Colonial High School, while the purple represents the proposed Attendance Zone for Lake Nona High School. No students reside in the commercial area. Our recommendation is to move the commercial area from Lake Nona High School to Colonial High School Attendance Zone. No input was received regarding this rezoning. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. Has any member of the public come to testify on this proposed technical rezoning? All right. Ms. Flynn, you get all the tough ones.
Thank goodness, every once in a while.
You do get a lot of the tough ones.
Thank you. Yeah, this is refreshing. But I make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation on this zoning.
All right. Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Flynn to accept the recommendation, seconded by Ms. Colbert. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to targeted rezonings. For each targeted rezoning, the impacted families were notified of the rezoning by U.S. mail. Under the transfer policy, any student who is rezoned from an existing school to an existing school is eligible for the grandfather transfer. Pupil assignment included a grandfather transfer request form in the notification. The first we will deal with is the states at Wake Iva. The line that EG is going around is the boundary line for all elementary, middle school, and high school. And as you can see, it divides the neighborhood. The area south of the line has one elementary school student within that area. We're going to look at elementary at first. In that area, it's recommended to move the area, can we go back one, please? Mine was too slow. The area south, that's in the yellow and the hash-marked area, to be moved from Rock Springs, no, I said that wrong, from Clay Springs to Rock Springs. The school zone for Rock Springs is shown in purple, and the new proposed Clay Springs Zone is in the green. We have received no input for this rezoning. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. Thank you. Are there any members of the public who have come to testify on this particular targeted rezoning? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Moore, would you like to make this motion? Is it your district? Okay. All right. Mrs. Robinson moves approval of the superintendent's recommendation with regard to this targeted rezoning, seconded by Ms. Gould. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? All right. Ms. Moore?
It really isn't particularly, it's just cleaning up lines, and staff really brought this to bear when they were looking at the area. But again, I'm just really pleased, Rock Springs, Clay Springs, there just really isn't much concern about that, and that's just a great place to be.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Moore. With that, did I already take a motion? I did, from Ms. Gould. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted. All right.
We're looking at the same area. The recommendation this time is for middle school. It is recommended to move the area from Piedmont Lakes to Apopka Middle School. The area in green shows the proposed Piedmont Lakes Zone. The area in purple is the proposed Apopka Middle School. We have not, we have received no input for this rezoning. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. Is there any member of the public who's come to testify as to this targeted rezoning? All right. Seeing none, can I have a motion to, it's been moved by Ms. Cadel, seconded by Mrs. Robinson? You good, Ms. Moore? Okay. All those, is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted.
Thank you. Same area, high school. It is recommended that the area be moved from the Wake Iva High School Zone to the Apopka High School Zone. So the area in green would be the proposed Wake Iva High School Zone, and the area in purple is the proposed Apopka High School Zone. We have received no input on this rezoning. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. Is there any member of the public who has come to testify on this particular targeted rezoning? Seeing none? All the, sorry. Mrs. Robinson moves we adopt the superintendent's recommendation. Ms. Cadel seconds. Is there any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted.
Thank you. Our next targeted rezoning is Timberleaf Village. This neighborhood is divided between Eccleston Elementary and Orla Vista Elementary. There are currently seven elementary students residing in the Eccleston Elementary area. It is recommended that the area of Timberleaf Village that is zoned to Eccleston be moved to Orla Vista Elementary School. The next map shows the zones. The area in purple would be the proposed Orla Vista Zone, and the area in green would be the Eccleston Zone. We have received no input for this rezoning. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. Is any member of the public come to testify on this particular targeted rezoning? And folks, we have to ask these questions on every single one, so bear with us. Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation?
I move that we adopt the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. It's been moved and seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the motion adopted.
Thank you. Our next is the Legends at Lake Nonon. This is an apartment complex that during the rezoning for 41ESC2, now known as Eagle Creek Elementary, was moved from Moss Park Elementary to Sunblaze. And the community requested that the growth of the area be shared between schools, and it was recommended that this area that EG is showing you be rezoned from Eagle Creek from Sunblaze to Eagle Creek. And that is the recommendation. There are currently 69 students in this area. Our next map shows the proposed new zones. The area in green would be the Sunblaze Zone, and the area in purple would be Eagle Creek. We have received input from 35 families in support of this option. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. Is any member of the public come to testify on this particular targeted rezoning? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Flynn?
Yeah, thank you. This is one of the highest-growing areas in not just central Florida, but I would, you know, venture to bet in Florida. So there's a lot of growth. All of these schools are at capacity or will be over capacity, but there's more schools coming within the next, you know, three, five, seven years. So it sounds like a lot of students. It is. The new school will be at capacity or somewhat over, but relief should be within two years or so. So I make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation on this rezoning.
All right. It's been moved by Ms. Flynn, seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. And I know this is a commitment you made to those families, so it should be recognized you followed through on that. All right.
Thank you. You'll be happy to know, our last targeted rezoning is in the Ocoy Apopka area. The area in yellow that EG is showing is currently zoned for Apopka High School, and it's being recommended to be moved to Wake Iva High School. The other two areas labeled B1 and B2 are currently at Wake Iva High School, and it's being recommended that they be rezoned to Ocoy High School. Currently, there are 67 students in Area A, and there are 48 students in Area B1, B2. Our next map shows the proposed new school zones. The area in green is the proposed Apopka High School. The area in purple is the proposed Wake Iva High School, and the area in orange is the proposed Ocoy High School. We have not received any input since the rural development workshop for this area. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. Last one, I believe. Are there any members of the audience who have come to testify as to this particular targeted rezoning? Seeing none, Ms. Moore, would you like to move this one? Ms. Moore moves approval of superintendent's recommendation, seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. And with that, it brings to a close a scintillating part of our school board meeting tonight.
Oh, come on!
WEGI, congratulations, Dr. McGowan.
Thank you.
Dr. Choice and Dr. Woodruff, we just went through that just to make you realize what you're missing, now that you're retired. You miss it immensely, don't you? All right. That's it for our rezonings tonight. We are now on our consent agenda, and I am going to turn it over. I want to turn it over to you, Vice Chair Gordon, if I may, to do some very special recognition, some folks that we are going to be naming some of our centers over. Can I do that?
Yes. If I may make a comment.
Okay. Okay.
We all have comments for these ladies. So if you don't mind.
No, not at all. Well, let me point out to anybody viewing this at home, I'll eat off then, that tonight, we are, first of all, on a more sober note, we are renaming the Liberty Middle School Orchestra Room in honor of Mr. Pablo Rivera, who tragically passed away recently and was revered by that school community. So I do want to recognize that and his family, and this is really the least that we can do to recognize his legacy as one of our esteemed educators. We're also recognizing somebody who's iconic in our community, Dr. Janice Choice. Dr. Choice, will you stand and let us recognize you? We are renaming the Pine Lock Elementary School Media Center to honor Dr. Choice. You know, it seems so inadequate to just name the media center after you, Dr. Choice, because you truly are, it's not, it's not an overused word to say, an iconic educational leader in the history of Orange County Public Schools, and we're so proud to do this. So congratulations to you and your staff and your family and loved ones for this. So congratulations to you and your staff and your family and loved ones for this. And I'm going to invite you up in a moment to say a few words. I really would, in fact, if you could make your way down. Oh, come on, Dr. Choice! And I'm going to invite our other honoree to say a few words as well. We are also recognizing tonight another legendary figure in the history of Orange County Public Schools. We are naming the John Young Elementary School Media Center after Dr. Minnie Woodruff. Dr. Woodruff, stand and let us recognize you as well. And we're going to hear from our fellow board members first, but then I'm going to take a little bit of the privilege of the chair and ask both of you ladies to say a few words. And, you know, you all are such wonderful role models and I get the impression you did not know, Dr. Woodruff. You thought I was just looking at you because you look so sharp and handsome in that beautiful suit you are wearing tonight. But, and you too, Dr. Choice, although I had a hard time seeing you back there, but we're so proud to do this and really it's just a very small token of our appreciation of all that you have meant to the children of Orange County and to countless students who have gone through your doors and to the example you have set for your fellow educators and to the many, many, many educational leaders that you have sowed throughout this district through your leadership over the years. You know, there's really the Dr. Choice and the Dr. Woodruff administrative tree, which you should both be very, very proud of throughout this district. So congratulations and on an honor well earned by, by both of you. All right. I'm taking my direction from Sasha Ferris tonight, so with that, Dr. Choice, we'd love it if you would come down to the podium and say a few words and congratulations. And I know you all didn't know that we were going to call on you to speak tonight, but I know both of you and neither of you has ever had a loss for words, so we're all yours. We're all yours.
But I am tonight. Indeed, it is an honor and a pleasure for the media center at my beloved school that I just love so much to be named in honor of me. I thank all of you. I thank my family. I have my brother and my daughter over there. Would you stand and my sister is over here, but the three of you stand. Now I'm putting them on the spot. I love you. I appreciate all of the support that you have given me through the years. And to the members of Pine Lock Elementary School who are here, would you stand? Some of you have moved on to other places, Ms. Jaster and all. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. It took a lot for this to take place, so I thank you. I appreciate everything you did in order to make this happen. And Cat Gordon, you know I love you. I appreciate you. I remember when you first came to Orlando and I said, "Ooh, who is that cute lady over there?" Thank you, Cat. You still speak up and you work on behalf of children and you know that's what I always tried to do, work on behalf of children, because we had to move Pine Lock from an F to an A and we had to keep it there. Thank you. I love you.
All right.
Wow. I mean, I mean, what can I say? Oh, if I could sing, I always crack up laughing at Dr. Woodruff, but if I could sing, I would say, "Oh, how I loved Janice." Yeah, only, only the Baptists know what I'm talking about. Look at Ron Rogers. Ron, I want to get it straight. Ron is, Ron is Dr. Choice's brother and her sister. Will you all just stand and her, Jerisha, will you all just stand again? This are immediate, her mother, I mean, they were educators, all of them. And everybody knows Ron, but they always think that you're Janice's husband. But I try to let them know, no.
That's my fault. I leaned over and I said, "The cat, did Ron get a new lady?"
But they are so close. Let's give them a round of applause. I, I, you know what? Janice Choice, Pine Lock, you know, you just took me in when I came onboard and the PTA president, will you just stand? Because your leadership with the faculty stand, because you were the wing. You were the wind, the wind beneath Pine Lock wing to just keep it afloat. And you don't know how much we just thank you. You've been the mother for so many of our schools and we just thank you. But tonight, it's about two, three people. One is deceased and, and how, and, but two are still living. And not only are they living, but they're working in the community. But I'm going to, I'm going to hold, because everybody had to say something about Minnie, but Janice Choice, you never gave up. I remember Dr. Jenkins were coming onboard and boy, when they put out pictures in the paper and we had all of those Fs. Dr. Lawson is sitting back there, wave your hand, Dr. Lawson. I said, "My God, how could a person get all 11 of the Fs?" Well, it was really 10, but, but they gave us the, they gave us the charter schools too. You know, they, they just gave us all of them. But, but you know, we were special, but you know what? Not one time did Dr. Choice say, "We are not going to do it." I was teaching in Osceola, still teaching in Osceola. Dr. Choice would call me and say, "You are going to have to come over here and I will meet you in my office and you will read to the children." And that was what she did. We would go in that little office and she would march him through that little tiny office. They would sit down in her office, she would read, the children would read, I would read, and then she, she would grab anybody to read. Everybody was reading. And I, I've never seen anybody like you because it was tough, but we kept our heads up, but you kept the leadership up high. You and your administrators that you worked with there, you had the best staff, you have the best staff today. And when we dedicated that school, Mr. Sumblett said himself, "That was one of the best dedications that we have ever had." I mean, it was all about the children and their future. Janice Choice and her husband, I will never forget this, when, when she came, when I came to Orlando, they took my children and educated them, gave them scholarship money. Back then, you didn't give anybody $60,000, but that's what her husband did for my daughter. He saw something in my daughter. She chose the military. But they saw something in my daughter and they gave her $60,000 to go to college that they gathered up from their alumni association. And I just think that that needs a round of applause. I will never forget that. I did not have to pay one dime, not one dime. And, but you bringing Pine Lock to the top. If, I, I always tell Minnie, if I had my way, Eccleston would have been Brooks Eccleston, Minnie Woodruff would have been Woodruff Young, Woodruff Young. Y'all wouldn't wait on me, so we just took what you gave us because we're not going to block you. But if it was up to me, it, it would have been Choice's Elementary School, you know, and, and because you know what? You deserve it. And as the chairman said, it's really not enough for what you've done for that community. You have revitalized. Did you see the enrollment? Did you see the diversity? And did you see the fight when they tried to close us? You came out with the children and the parents and the faculty and the staff and you deserve a round of applause and please come back. Your time is up. Please come back. So thank you so very much. We love you.
Dr. Woodruff, you have the unenviable task of following Mrs. Gordon. But I've heard you. And if there's anybody in this community that Mrs. Gordon doesn't want to follow, it's Dr. Minnie Woodruff. Congratulations on this well-earned honor.
To God be the glory. The Honorable School Board, the Honorable Chairman, all of the friends and members of the School Board of Orange County, Florida. I tell you, this comes as a complete surprise. Dr. Porter, yes, called me a couple of weeks ago and he said, "Dr. Woodruff, if you come down to the School Board in May 12th, we're going to recognize you." And that was it. And I said, "Oh." So then I saw someone else and I said, "What should I know?" And they said, "Nothing. You just show up." But I tell you, I am so happy. I'm so excited. I'm so surprised. 25 years ago, we dedicated John Young Elementary School. It's hard to believe, but there are some faculty who came with me. We call ourselves Charter. The principal of Eccleston, I'm sorry, got a lot of schools in my background, of John Young is here as well. We met by accident doing something good for the community. And so I just want to thank you so much. It's the most outstanding honor. When I was a little girl, growing up in Winter Park, I'd always see these buildings and these schools, never knowing that I would dedicate my life, 50 years, to education. I didn't know it at that time, but I just knew I wanted to be a teacher and I wanted to be a good teacher. And I had the great fortune to kind of move on up the line. And I'd see these buildings with names on them up there and I'd say, "I, I want my name on a school." To speak it is to have it. And so to be, to have the honor of being named Minnie B. Woodruff Media Center, whatever, at John Young Elementary School, I'm so excited. I'm going over there tomorrow. They invited me to the dedication. Still didn't say anything, but I'm going over tomorrow morning, 9:30. I live on the east side. John Young is well here, but I'm packing a lunch and I'm starting at 3 o'clock to get there. I want to take this opportunity to thank the people who came over tonight to just be a support. This is all there is. After 50 years in education, what you have, you do not have a bankroll, but what you have is relationships and friends. And I just thank you so much for coming out this evening to be a part of this honor. This is the greatest honor that I can ever think of. I want to first thank my daughter, flew in from California, and my grandson, would you stand? My daughter, Dr. Edith Woodruff, product of Orange County schools. And my other daughter, Dr. Conchita Woodruff Johnson, is in the air. Should have landed by now. I'm so sorry she's missing this part, but I'll get the message to her. She has two little ones as well. My sister, Dr. Edith Jones, professor at Clapham University. My brother, Mr. Clem Boyer. And I tell you, my neighbors, my friends, I, 50 years ago, maybe, maybe a little bit longer, about 12 or 13 of us worked together at Eccleston Elementary School to bring honor to Mr. Brooks. And they are here tonight, my Eccleston sisters. I think I told you that we go to Golden Corral for lunch every other week. I mean, every other month. The dinner is $7. That's all we pay and it's just, oh, it's just wonderful. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm just a past, past teacher. 40 years I taught here in this county. I know I don't look like that, but I did. I was under Mr. Brooks and he taught us how to be good teachers. My coworkers, please stand. And we are called the Brooks Gang. We are called the Brooks Gang. We all started with Mr. Brooks when he started and Minnie encouraged us to get together. So here we are. Thank you, Minnie.
I just need one more, I just need one more second. Will the people from my church, you know, once you retire from the school system, your biggest institution then becomes the church. So will the people from my church, would you stand wherever you are? Flowers, temple, church, if God in Christ, all right? Thank you. And why, and while you're standing, while you're standing, for everyone who came to support Minnie, would you stand and let me see you so I can, so we can get a picture at some point? Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Orange County School Board, John Young Elementary, and God bless you.
And let's all stand for Dr. Woodruff. Well, Dr. Woodruff, it's fitting that you ended with your church because your friends and family will laugh at this, but every time I hear you speak, I just want to say, "And the people all said? Amen." All right, Mrs. Gordon? Mrs. Coburn?
Well, Dr. Woodruff, first I'd need to just tell you that you claimed it and now you own it. And I have spent the last week or so being schooled in the many, many attributes of Dr. Minnie Woodruff. And I'll, I'll tell you some that I have learned. Many of you don't know this, but Dr. Woodruff dedicated more than four decades to the service of the children here in the state of Florida. Dr. Woodruff, in addition to serving in several of our Orange County Public Schools, rose up through Osceola County Public Schools to be the district supervisor of reading programs. And so it is very fitting that we name a media center after her. Of all of her fine, fine accomplishments, she, the entire time, the 12 years that she spent at John Young Elementary School, that school was an A school, all 12 years. Dr. Woodruff has won more awards than I can enumerate here, but I'm sure one of the things that she is most proud of is the raising of her two fine daughters, Edith and Conchita, who are both doctors. And the many, many community members who have just told me how beloved you are and one told me a special thing about you that I want to share is that while they, while John Young Elementary School was under construction, your office was in a portable and above her desk was a quote that read, "The pace of a leader determines the rate of the pack." And you must have kept up, kept up quite a pace because of the awards that you've won and the lasting legacy that you've left on the children of Orange County Public Schools. And tomorrow, it will be my fine honor to be a part of the ceremony dedicating the media center to Dr. Minnie Woodruff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coburn. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. I certainly wouldn't let this opportunity pass without saying just a few words. I am honored to be a part of recognizing these two fine young women. I have to tell you, when I was the principal, I walked in their shadows. I am proud to walk in their footsteps. I feel that so many actually stand on the shoulders of those matriarchs who paved the way. And so I want to personally both commend and thank them for their years of service. But as two strong African-American women, I am incredibly proud of you. But as two strong African-American women, I am incredibly proud and pleased to be a part of this recognition. Thank you for your years of service to our children. That will be an impact on this community for years to come. Congratulations to you and all of your family members, and certainly commendations go to all of the instructional staff that are here to support you, both retirees and those that are existing teachers and staff as well. Congratulations to you both.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, and I too had the opportunity to be in the presence of Dr. Minnie Woodruff, along with Dr. Janet Joyce, just incredible women. But I want to really let you know the real deal. When they built John Young, I'm telling you, everybody said, "If you're not going to teach, do not go to John Young." Because Minnie Woodruff will not have you in there doing nothing. And I will tell you that everybody that actually taught there will tell you, and if they didn't stay there, you know why. I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding. But I wanted you to know that you have been an incredible administrator, both of you being honored tonight, and Daryl's going to speak on the, because I don't know if the family is here, but we would like to see the families here. But you all have been a pillow in the community. Not only have you and Dr. Joyce continued to work, but the both of you, you're in everything. And not only are you in everything, but you are out there helping others, and you continue, God continues to bless you and bestow upon you goodness. You're not only just looking out, you never look out for yourself. And I think that's why the honor has been bestowed upon you, from the John Young faculty and staff and parents, and from the Pine Lock faculty and staff and parents. You are two incredible women, and you are a role model for all of us. We love you, and we thank you.
Well, congratulations again, Dr. Woodruff and Dr. Joyce. Great leaders, demand excellence, and great leaders also inspire those who follow them. And it's clear that both of you are great leaders, and we're all the richer for it. So congratulations, we're very, very proud of you. We also are recognizing Mr. Rivera tonight, and I'd like to ask, is there anybody here from Liberty or from Mr. Rivera's family? Would anybody like to say anything on behalf of Mr. Rivera? I know it's a more sober note, but it's really our great honor to name the media center after, or, excuse me, not the media center, but the orchestra room in honor of Mr. Rivera. And thank you for speaking.
Hey, how you doing? I'm James Russo, I'm the principal from Liberty. I spoke with Mrs. Rivera. She wasn't able to make it this evening, but she was very appreciative. This was a long time coming. It was a sudden death for Mr. Rivera, and we wanted to remember him appropriately. So I think naming this orchestra, so we can remember his legacy. A plaque will go outside of the orchestra room, the room will be named after him, and then we're going to have a ceremony next Friday, May 22nd, at 5:30. So we do thank you, and we thank the board for their approval.
Thank you, Principal Russo. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. It was a very, you know, sad loss for the whole community and for OCPS. Mr. Rivera was a music teacher, and I first met him when he was at Castle Creek. And Castle Creek had a talent show, and he had put together, you know, like Jack Rock, Jack Black and School of Rock, remember the movie? Well, he had a band of kids, just like that, on the drums, you know, singing. It was just so creative. But he was beloved by his students, and they sorely miss him. He was a National Board Certified Teacher, he was a composer, he was a arranger, and he was a member of the Florida Orchestra Association. So quite a bit of musical background. He instilled a love for music in his students. And so, it's with, it's a real honor to be able to name the orchestra room after Mr. Rivera. And it's unfortunate his family can't be here, but I understand that their daughter had a, what was it, an award ceremony, or whatever, you know, conflicting with tonight. So we'll certainly give them this honor on the 22nd. But thank you, board, for, and for Liberty for doing the honor.
Ms. Moore, welcome.
No, which more? Mr. Rivera was a CTA member, and his wife is a teacher in the system. I'd like to say just a couple of words, because I did attend his funeral, and I know that he was involved in our performance pay system at a time when he was not judged on the students that he taught. And so, I watched at a funeral of students who came in at 7th grade and spoke so well in front of a group of people. And I commented about the students and how comfortable they were in front of the group of people, and a mom behind me said, "That's my daughter." And I didn't know that she could do this. And the room was filled with people from the community, teachers, students. It was just such a symbolic picture of that teacher and the influence that he had on that community. And so, I just wanted to share that experience, because I was just amazed at how that really talked about the influence that he had over a lifetime. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we will certainly keep Mr. Rivera's family in our prayers. Ms. Moore, did you want to make a comment as well?
I did. I really had the blessing to meet him a couple of years ago, and I happened into his classroom while we were down at Liberty, and I made the mistake of telling him that I could play the violin, so he immediately handed over, said, "Let's see," in front of the entire class. And so, there I went, playing about, you know, it was like Twinkle Twinkle Little Star. But he, you could just tell that he, the admiration and the creativity and the ability to teach those students, just in that five or 10 minutes that I spent with him, it was just remarkable.
Well, thank you for sharing that memory. Alright, Dr. Jenkins, before we adopt the consent agenda.
Chairman, one change I neglected to announce, that is Item 705. That is the naming of a new school in School Board Member Gould's district. That needs to be moved to non-consent, Item 1601, so Ms. Gould can then bring her motion for a name for that new school.
Well, that's good to hear, because I studied the agenda tonight, and I kept reading and going, "What are we naming it? I'm not sure which of the three names we're picking." So that explains it. So with that change, we'll pull that item off and move it to non-consent. Does anybody have any objection to that? Saying none, show that done. Alright, we are now on approving the consent agenda. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. Dr. Woodruff, Dr. Joyce, congratulations, we're so proud of you. And it's late, so we're going to pause for everybody to file out, and go celebrate. Alright, let's go ahead and move on with our meeting. It's been pointed out to me that I don't think we actually had a motion to adopt the consent agenda. I thought we did.
I did.
You did.
I said it, but I didn't hear a second.
Okay, so let's just, just to comply with the formalities, it's been moved by Vice Chair Gordon and seconded by Mrs. Cadel, that we adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. Alright, we do now have an item on non-consent that we've moved off, which is the naming of a new elementary school. So, Dr. Jenkins, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Bridgette Williams is area superintendent for this particular, brand-new school. I'm going to, Ms. Gould, you can handle it without Dr. Williams going through any background, can't you? Due to the hour, I will just turn it over directly to Ms. Gould. You want Dr. Williams to give the lead in? No, it hadn't been moved yet, unless you refresh.
Yes, we are opening a new relief school for Keans Crossing, yeah, Hallelujah is right, and a little bit for Sunset Park, mostly for Keans Crossing. And this school is in Independence, and there was a ballot to go out to name the school, and the three names were Freedom Elementary, Independence, and Liberty. Freedom won a little bit more vote than Independence, but I'm actually going to recommend Independence for this school. There's been kind of a community of calling it Independence, and we have more schools, including one next fall, not the 15, but 16, opening as well, that will relieve Sunset Park more. So I think Independence is a little more fitting for the location of this school, and represents the community it will ultimately serve as we continue to add more and more schools. So that would be my recommendation, and they were so close anyway, that I think they'll be happy with both names.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, was this from an earlier, or this, on this? Okay, Ms. Moore.
Ms. Gould, that was music to my ears, because I was sitting over here. I just have this thing about school names, it's probably because I'm spending my life writing histories on schools right now, just finished one up on Clay Springs. And it is just, it is so fascinating, and it gives you such depth when the name has some significance, and I think that is certainly makes sense for the community, for the geography, for where it is. And secondly, I really think Freedom would have gotten confused with Freedom Middle School and Freedom High School and, you know, Ms. Cobert's area. So I am just absolutely happy that you said that, because that was my initial thoughts as well. Are you ready to go home, Dr. Jenkins? Second. Second.
Thank you.
Alright, well, I just want to say that you made my day too, because we already have a Freedom High School, and we already have a Liberty Middle School, which were the other two contenders. So I don't like name confusion either. I think, you know, it just makes it overly confusing for the community, so I support it as well. Alright, with that, anybody else want to weigh in before we vote? Alright, all those in favor of Ms. Gould's motion to name the new school, Independence Elementary, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show us having a new Independence Elementary School. Alright, board members, we are now on report by attorneys, and I want to say something before we go to Mr., well, yeah, before we go to Mr. Rodriguez for his report. Mr. Rodriguez has had a really, really tough row to hoe for the last year and a half, between the West Orange Relief School litigation, the Wedgwood issues, school prayer issues, Avalon, Wedgefield, the Avalon, I could go on and on and on. And sometimes justice is poetic, and I don't know if you all recognize this, but Mr. Rodriguez had a banner week last week. Not only did we win before the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals, I believe, on the Bible Distribution issue, on the other side's efforts to make us pay attorney's fees, but he shepherded us through a bruising, grueling, not over yet, but getting close to the finish line battle on the West Orange Relief High School. We finally got across the finish line with the county commission on that. He guided us, along with Ms. Gould, her leadership, and he guided us with Ms. Cadel's leadership as well on the Wedgefield. K8 got us across the finish line on that. And we'll see what happens with the finish line on May 19th on Avalon, but he's done everything he can on that effort as well. So he's, and I have a feeling I'm forgetting a couple of other wins we had last week. Why don't you cue me in? But it's been a big week for him and his team, so I want to also recognize Eileen Fernandez, who's played a big role in all of this. John Palmerini, Amy Engvall, who's played a big role in all of this. Sarah Corn, his whole legal team, and I'm forgetting whom I forget.
Jared.
What's that?
Jared Brooks.
Jared Brooks.
Laura Kelly.
Facilities, our facilities always.
Laura Kelly.
Laura, was Lauren here? I'm not sure. I saw her earlier. So the whole legal team's had just a really wonderful run here the last month, and it's been well-earned. Mr. Rodriguez, with that, let me turn it over to you for your report, but let's first give you a big round of applause. The whole team, Eileen, everybody.
My report was going to be simple, we don't have a rapport, but we did have, last week we had the emergency motions that were filed as well, trying to get injunctive relief to even stop the county commission hearing from taking place. And then, towards the tail end of the week, I haven't had a chance to circulate it, but we did get, in the Southern Atlantic case, Brian Kerwin and his firm, representing our interest in federal court, knocked out seven of the eight counts, leaving really one that we think we should be able to win on summary judgment. But we've got a great team, thanks to your support, and I appreciate that. Eileen certainly has done a yeoman's job in making sure we carry the ball in all of the rezonings that we've had, which hopefully, after Avalon, that'll be the last one for some time to come. So, thank you.
Well, congratulations again, and, you know, board members, I just want to commend you all as well. I'm a firm believer, sometimes you have to fight for what's right. And, you know, this board is showing that it's willing to get in there and punch and fight when we know we're fighting for what's right. And it's a hard way to do things sometimes, but that's why we have courts. And I think it's shown a lot of fortitude by this board to be willing to go to the courts to vindicate the rights of our students and our families and our taxpayers. So thank you for leading us in that fight, Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Cadel.
I have a question on Wedgefield. Have we ever gotten served on the suit once they were supposed to be moving it to Circuit Court?
So the update on Wedgefield is, they, we accepted service, because we want to get it moved along as quickly as we can. I don't believe that at this point we've had any definitive ruling by the Circuit Court accepting it. They filed it in county court, didn't have a lawyer at the time they filed it, they did just barely make the deadline. We expect that the Circuit Court will accept a transfer of that matter, and once they do, we'll be ready to defend vigorously your rights and the decision of the county commission to approve the school. So, but we have started, we're one step away from completing all the steps we need with the county, and DRC for that is set for the 20th, I believe, 20, what date?
TRG has been scheduled for the 20th, and DRC will be scheduled thereafter.
Yeah, TRG is another one of those initial groups that meets before the DRC. So we'll have TRG, then DRC, and then home free, hopefully.
And the gopher tortoises will be moved by then?
Ms. Gould.
I wanted to follow up and also say thank you to Mr. Rodriguez and the legal team. And one of the things, while this has been a challenging two and a half years, one of the things that I think will come out in reflection once all the tempers die down, is that Mr. Rodriguez was always out there and very fair in responding to all sides, even when it was difficult, because we felt like we were on the attack. But he could look through the emotion and try to see what was fair to do, and give everything full look and a complete review, so that we could all feel comfortable that we were moving forward. And I think that's sometimes hard, when you're getting poked at all the time. So I want to thank him for that, and for always putting the community first, even when tempers were flaring.
Amen. Mrs. Gordon.
And I'm up here just smiling, because I really want to thank the previous board and this board, because you made a statement about you have to fight for what is right. And I remember bringing to the board table, and even going to executive session, which I'm not going to tell what happened in executive session, but trying to fight for a legal department. And we did not have a legal department, and nobody at the board table wanted to listen to me. And I would go to all of these meetings and come back and talk about it. And then, when we did get Eileen and John, that was a little bit, but. I listened to the area superintendents, I listened to facilities and all the board, I listened to all the staff, I was listening to Ms. Kent, and when they are trying to hire people in a process, and we were not getting the legal help that we were not getting the legal help that we needed. Then Mr. Blocker brought on Dr. Jenkins. And I want you to know, we, I'm taking what you said, and you know, I love to praise our opponent because you have to fight for what is right. Where would we have been today had we not started creating this legal department? And I want you to know, you really need to give thanks to the National School Board Association for the training and the fortitude of making a board member look at and training what is really needed at your table. I'm telling you, you got to look at that. We did not give up. I asked you to name it after me and another lawyer, but that's all right. I don't want that anymore because every time I hear that somebody was killed on somebody's street, it just scares me to death. And I don't want anybody saying, oh, they killed somebody at Cat Gordon Law Firm. But I'm saying this, I think that I have been Mr. Rodriguez's toughest opponent in the legal department. I've given him a hard time as far, I have given him a hard time. I think he's cried to you all and that's, that's.
No.
No, but, but listen, I have given him a hard time. But I'm telling you today, but he knows when I'm proud because I'm like a mama, I just tell him. And then he knows when I'm not proud, I just tell him. I don't butter it up and he knows it. I let him know what didn't go right, what should have gone right. But let me tell you, we have never had, and I talked to Mr. Blocker and Dr. Jenkins about this, we never had an attorney that wanted to fight. And we were talking about you last night, that we were at Waukai, but matter of fact, last night at the awards, and some of the kids were saying they wanted to become attorneys and where they were going to go to school and everything. And I, we talked about you, you're a fighter. You don't mind going to court. I mean, you'll go over to board and say, I'm going to take this thing and I'm going to ride with it. And that's how I ride. I want you to know that. I'm very proud of you. This board is extremely proud of you and your team. Because I do not know where this board would be today without a legal department. They did not see it right. It got voted out, voted down. Dr. Jenkins came in, she talked, she said, yes, we do. I spoke with several of the area superintendents back then, we weren't getting the help that we needed. There's not one person on this staff, from the facilities department to the financial department, that cannot say to the individual board members, that cannot say, we cannot reach an attorney when we want to. And I want to say for your leadership, Mr. Chairman, for being a lawyer yourself and knowing when to step back and knowing when to step in, knowing when to step aside, knowing when to put a piece in, it has just been incredible. It's been an incredible journey. It's been a tough journey. But I want you to know, Woody, you are one of the finest fighters that I have seen in court. And you did not back down. We couldn't even get to court. Matter of fact, I remember getting kicked out of court, you know, with the lawyer, with our lawyers. That many judges told, get out of here. And we had to pack up all our stuff and run and couldn't open our mouth. But you fought back. I don't care who court you were in, whose chamber you were in, you came back with the force. And I want to commend you and your legal staff, going out with them, looking at the properties, debating what was right and wrong. So I want to say, Dr. Jenkins, with you and Mr. Blocker leadership, and when you became the chief of staff, like Kathy, we decided we're going forward. We brought it to the board and the board voted in. And I think your legal department is now, how many in the department? Six. And that is to be commended. And I want to give you a round of applause for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. And I also want to recognize two other folks, and Dr. Bridgette Williams and Dr. Anna Diaz and John Morris. You know, it's been a grueling year and a half. And I know we're not there at the finish line yet, but all of you all have worked exceptionally hard. Dr. Williams, you've been absolutely masterful in mobilizing the community for us. Dr. Diaz, you have as well, along with your executive area directors. So it has not gone unrecognized by us, the work that you've put in for us to really help us mobilize the community. On that note, I'm going to segue before I go to the superintendent. We had tried, board members, I know I'm getting a little bit out of order here, but I want you all to know this. We had tried, I tried mightily to pull together a board recognition before the summer. I want you to know why I was trying so hard and we weren't able to pull it together because I really feel a compulsion to recognize, and I think there's probably two or three dozen hardcore organizers and supporters who pulled together hundreds of community members. And it's going to lose a lot of the oomph if we do it in the fall. So I was really trying to get something done before we broke for the summer and before everybody went home. We weren't able to do that. But I think what we're going to do, I've talked to Mr. Thomas about this, I think what we're going to do instead is we're going to organize, we don't usually do this with our schools, but some type of groundbreaking out at the West Orange Relief site where we can get all, and that way they're all out, that way they're all out there and it's in their area. And we're going to do one with your permission, Ms. Cadel, if you're okay with it, out at the Wedgfield site when the appropriate time comes because.
Only when the snakes are gone.
Okay. But we really need to recognize those folks, and you all know who they are, who brought out dozens upon dozens upon dozens of residents because it turned the tide for us on these issues and recognize them. And I'm not sure we're going to be able to do the same at Avalon, but regardless, we're going to recognize those folks too there. Ms. Gould, did you want to say something? We are.
Well, and I, and that was one of my suggestions because that is something they've said to me that they want to be at, so that may be another way. I don't know that that doesn't preclude us from maybe doing something at the beginning of the school year. Because I think as we know the timetable and kind of work some things out, at least from the West Orange perspective, it was such a long, long battle, longer than my term that some of these parents have been advocating for this, that I think it would still be pretty fresh in their minds at least. And I think the same for Wedgfield, from what I saw at the commission meeting, that they, it won't be easily forgotten in 12 weeks.
Ms. Cadel.
A couple of things. The Wedgfield people will be having a groundbreaking because they write me about every week wanting to know when the groundbreaking is going to happen. And I did get them to agree that they are as afraid of snakes as I am. So I have told Mr. Morris, let's just make sure that we got some roads out there and stuff. I have another suggestion to recognize them now. I think it would be very appropriate if we came up with a letter that all seven of us signed and sent it, sent it to those key organizers, identify them with their addresses and ask them to share it with their network. Because, you know, I think if they saw something signed from all of us now, it would mean just as much. For the people from Wedgfield to come here, if you've never tried to do it for a 5:30 meeting, they'll be packing a lunch at 3:00 to get here at 5:30. And that's no exaggeration. So I think they would appreciate a letter signed from all of us as much as having to come here for a meeting.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea. And you know what I've seen? Our decision on our side of town for Avalon hasn't been decided yet, but I feel good about it. I feel, I feel we're going to get it. But the parents and residents who support the school out there have been remarkable. One of them is out in the audience right now, Angela Browning, is part of that crew that's, you know, shaking and moving it out there. You remember her from, from our recess event, you know? So she's, she's now working it on that end. But you know what's really sort of, what I see as an end product of all this, other than just getting a needed school? Out in our area, despite what they say, different neighborhoods have come together and leaders have emerged. And, and that's what I truly see happening. They're articulate, they're smart, they're stepping out of their comfort zone, doing advocacy efforts that they've never done before. And it's really pretty remarkable. I'm, I'm impressed with them and sometimes a little intimidated by how much they're really mobilizing and getting together. When I say intimidated, I mean in a, in a good way, that I got to keep up with these folks. So we're going to have a party. Our, our group likes to party, don't you think? Yeah, yeah. We'll get the letter, but we'd like to party too. So we're going to do something.
Well, you know, with the superintendent's permission, what I would like to do is to defer to you, Ms. Flynn, and you, Ms. Cadel, and you, Ms. Gould, to organize for your respective schools, whatever you want to do. I thought a groundbreaking would be nice, but I agree with some Ms. Cadel said, all three of those groups like to enjoy themselves. So you know your areas, maybe if we can all retire after the groundbreaking and do it late in one afternoon and go have a soda and a hamburger with them, you know, and celebrate a little bit because I think that they've earned it. And hopefully sooner rather than later, because I think if we wait till the fall, it's going to have lost some of the impact. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, maybe. All right. Dr. Jenkins, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman. Three things briefly. One, didn't know we were going to be giving commendations to general counsel, but I'll add my comments. I was actually going to write them on his evaluation this week. But let me say, I wouldn't let everyone else comment and not make a comment as well. I think we have a tremendous legal team. My administration notices a marked difference in being able to get answers to questions and issues that they have. So for the team that he has assembled and his leadership that helped them understand attorney-client relationship, so, meaning legally recommending and advising as opposed to management decisions, has been very clear. Those lines are so clear for his staff. So for the six folks he's brought on board and that he's trained, I want to commend him as well. Would have just put it in writing this week, but I wanted to say it publicly as well. Secondly, I want you to know, we are once again a gold level school for a healthy school district award. May 2015, it was announced, it's a two-year designation, so it goes through April of 2017. Last time, we were one of only 10 districts in the state that had that recognition. This year, we don't know the total number yet because we have to wait for them to publish an actual list, but it indicates that this board and this administration, this organization takes seriously the health of their students. And so lots of information on that you can certainly read at your leisure. But we're very proud of the team that got us that recognition once again. Thirdly, and lastly, you are certainly invited to the sportsmanship peace talks. That is the event that our students put together, the leadership superintendent's student advisory team put together. And they have actually invited all of the fall sports and coaches, captain and co-captains for all of the fall sports. They will do it again for the spring sports when we get to December. But they're having the peace talks, their T-shirts will be printed in time, they'll come in for a lunch. We're having some speakers from the NFL, the NBA, and the MLS. And they will have their T-shirt, they will receive their T-shirts, the One Love, OCPS Rivalry Love slogan on those T-shirts. And they are going to sign the banner, much like we did when we had our first strategic plan, and all of the participants and stakeholders signed on. So the peace talks are on May 20th. Had some media interest as well. We hope we get some positive coverage for our students. They've done a phenomenal job. I am still so impressed and pleased with the theme that they came up with. You're certainly invited to attend as well. That's it, Chairman.
May 20th, does everybody have the flyer?
That was the flyer I passed down.
You know what? I didn't get it passed down all the way. My bad. Sorry. I'm like the black hole. Comes in, never comes out.
19 schools, one team.
You know, I'm tired. No, we all are. I told those guys back there at Fox, I do a 7:00 AM interview, and every time I do, I regret it because to get up there. Anyway, so, Ms. Flynn, was this old or new? Oh, yeah, I have your button punched. Okay. All right. All right. Subsequent meetings or work sessions, request for you all. We are about to come up on the, I'll call it the July hiatus or the break, for what it's worth, of three to four weeks when we don't have a board meeting. But now's the time when I start to put together the work session schedule for the fall. So if you could, I would really appreciate if all of you all would start to feed into Ms. McGill or Joseph, Mr. Morgan, what work sessions you want to have in the fall. We've been pretty booked up this spring ahead of time. And share with us. I'm going to lead off and just to give you all a couple that I'm going to ask that we have scheduled. One, Dr. Jenkins knows this is coming, but yeah, you can hand that out, that's current work session schedule. But we do need to report an update because it's a commitment I've made and others have made on this board on the recess issue before we break for the summer. And I know Dr. Jenkins has done a lot of work on that, so we're going to come back and report on where we're at on the recess issue at one of our next, how many board meetings do we have before July? Two, two left, I think? At one of our next two board meetings before we, three? So I'm not saying it'll be the next one, but that will be a report issue and we'll try to give you a heads up when, when, when that's going to be okay because we did make that commitment. Secondly, we had tentatively tried to schedule, because of scheduling concerns, a lengthy, I don't know if I call it a work session, but work session on Marzano, sort of a tutorial on it. Dr. Jenkins, and forgive me, I hadn't had a chance to give you a heads up on this, but I do want us to get that scheduled. I feel a real compulsion. I would be willing to do it in the summer, you know, maybe in late June or sometime around then. But I want as many board members around who can do it. I know July's tough because that's when a lot of us take our family vacations. But more and more, I really feel a compulsion to really dive deep on Marzano and especially looking at the issues surrounding it, classroom observations, see what we can do. I will give you all a heads up. I'm getting increasingly opinionated on our need to really look at our classroom observation system and what we need to do as an administration and as a board to start to look at the effect it's having on our teacher morale. Because I think it's gone to the point of crisis. And the number one thing, far more than testing, I hear from teachers, is not the testing, it's the classroom observations. And it's the way we're implementing Marzano. So I know that, you know, I'm in over my head on this. I feel the need to understand it really fully. So, Dr. Jenkins, it's our opportunity to get educated by you. Full day. And also, you know, I'd really like a good education when we do that on what we can do under the statutory guidelines. I'm not saying we strike out on our own, but I really feel a compulsion at least start to really look at Marzano and how we're utilizing it. And, Mr. Rodriguez, if this doesn't offend you, Dr. Jenkins, I'd like to bring in Legal too, to give us a good tutorial on what's permissive and what's not permissive legally under the state statutes there, because I do think we need to start to talk about this issue. And then the last one, actually, those are, that's the only one really that I feel a compulsion to tackle. Mrs. Robinson.
I wanted to follow up with the conversation we were having earlier in the pre-agenda about a work session, the need, I mean, I know we need to have a testing work session because we have some decisions that have to be made. And I didn't know, Dr. Jenkins, your timeline on that, obviously, we can't sneak it in in the next month. Is it the kind of thing that even if we do it in the fall, once school starts, we can, we can make changes then for the school year? Or is that, or does it need to happen before school starts?
So the board is actually required to adopt policies around it. So you would go through your very lengthy policy adoption process, which includes work sessions around that as well. I am of the opinion, if we receive, no further clarification, you saw the email that came out even after our FAQ, I'm of the opinion, we'll make recommendations for the board on how we can move forward and just make sure we are protecting students and teachers as much as we believe feasible under, under the guidelines we've received. And so I think that workshop, those workshops and policy planning, I hate to add that to the list for the legal team, but I think that policy planning does need to start this summer. And it'll include workshops.
Yeah. We have a lot to do. We might not be able to take July off.
I wouldn't go that far.
I'm just teasing. Okay, well, thank you. I knew it would be coming up soon. Thank you.
And let me throw this out there for you all to chew on as I go to each of you to comment on these topics. You know, we, we could and maybe should consider doing our retreat much earlier than we typically do it this year. And I don't know if you all would be receptive to doing a retreat on a weekend and on a, or even on a weekday, however you want to do it. But no? Okay, then we won't. Never mind, we'll just do. But if we're going to do it all day on, okay. Forget I mentioned it then. All right, Ms. Moore. But, but on a weekday, okay, well, I was sensitive of your schedule. It's hard on a weekday for some of you all. So, because a lot of these are good retreat topics as well, if we're doing deep dives on some of them. Ms. Moore.
Yes, and, Dr. Jenkins, I'm going to apologize because we brought this conversation up and she has not heard this topic, but I staffed it and she is sitting out there, did such a fabulous job on the VPK issue this year, and I'm really pleased with the progress. And we're, we're moving on that. And that was the subject that I had. And that was a subject that I had asked to workshop almost a year in advance, and that year of preparation was really, really helpful. And so I have a particular interest, Mr. Wright and I had been over at a school the other day, working with parents and teachers, and the one issue that came up that I would like to maybe in the spring, so there's no absolute rush on this, but I wanted to bring it up, would be looking at parent involvement, parent volunteerism, not so much the training because we're doing a fantastic job with that, but how can we encourage and inspire and maybe from a legal perspective as well? What can we do to increase the amount of parent participation at our schools? And so I would love to do that in the spring sometime.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Cobert.
Thank you, Mr. Soblet, and thank you, Mrs. Robinson, for bringing that up. I just want to reiterate what we did talk about. I think testing is probably the issue at the forefront on most people's minds here, district level, state level, and I just think we need a thorough review and vetting of our evaluation system at all levels. So I would appreciate the time and attention to that.
Thank you for weighing in. Ms. Gould.
I've had already been thinking about our upcoming workshops and things, so I'm really happy to be able to contribute to this part of the conversation tonight. The first and foremost thing that I would like to talk about is how we handle growth, and I'd like to better understand the triggers in high-volume areas and why it's homogenous across the county versus looking at Lake Nona and the Horizon West area that have a more rapid rate of growth that's recognized nationally. Tied to that is also the cost of the portables that we drop as compared to in high-growth areas. Should we have some more hardcore building? And if we know we're going to keep a benchmark of 150% before we trigger school in a high-growth area, should we plan for core, which we do not right now, have as part of a standardized model in those high-growth areas, a drop in cafeteria and something that could be a media center? And what are the costs associated with that? And I'd like to just better understand all of that, to know the cost assessment, because I know we spend a lot of money moving portables in and out and flexing that, and is there a better way to do that? Because I know barring no major recessionary or global incidents, we're on a 10-year steady growth pattern in West Orange County. And I think with diversification of industries in Orange County, I think we're going to only see that expand. It's not going to just stay in the Nona and the West Orange areas. We're going to start to see core being redeveloped. We're going to start to see all kinds of redevelopment issues, and I think we could maybe do that just a little bit better. I absolutely agree on the classroom evaluations and understanding how that works and the way that our curriculum is implemented and how does it speak to the various levels of the students. In addition to that, the high growth and the portable and that, I would also like to, now that we're going to be coming up on two years of redoing our certifications and such, really understand direct career pathing a little bit better. I think where we've got the certification piece, and I know there's components where we directly career path and we work with organizations like the Builders Association and some others, Universal, where kids have jobs, but how can we expand that career pathing and internship and apprenticeship opportunities? And can we target that a little bit better? And what's available right now? What could we expand in there? And then lastly, do we, and this is more of a question, do we need, I know we've talked about the school siting and we're going to implement a committee, but do we need to come to some boundary terms and understanding of what we're charging that committee to do prior to the school siting committee being convened? Because I'm not sure I'm completely clear on what we want for outcomes from that group. I know what I'd like to see for outcomes, but I don't know if collectively that I understand what we want for outcomes. So those were my few.
You know, that one's moving on a quicker track, so I don't know about you all. I know we're always tired at this point in the meeting, but to me, this is the best part of being on the school board because we're talking about substance here and having a candid conversation in a way that's hard to get us all together. So what I'd like to suggest is, I think that, and let me noodle on this, okay? So don't take this too much to heart, but at this portion of the next meeting, maybe if we can have that discussion on what the communication committee recommended and the parameters, because I think we need to start moving on that. And I know you feel that imperative, Ms. Gould. So, Mr. Rodriguez, I hate to dump this in your lap, but I'm going to look to you to give us some structure in your team on the structure that Ms. Moore's communications committee decided upon for looking at those issues. And I don't remember the front makeup. We don't have to go into it now, but if you can sort of start thinking about names too, you know, because I think we all have folks in mind that we think would be good for input on looking at those issues. Because I know the mayor wants to move quickly on those issues, and that's not going to wait for the fall. So, you know, we need to start looking at those issues anew pretty quickly. And by the way, they just continue to get more and more media attention, which is a good thing on the school siting. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. In regard to the changes for the siting ordinance, some of the people in my community were under the impression that it was going to be presented in a couple of days. One of the newspaper articles made it sound that way. So, I mean, we're still, it's still going back and forth, right? I mean, as far as, I mean, obviously, but, and then I have something else.
And I will say, I never understand the news cycle. I agree, there's been a burst all of a sudden in the press on the school siting ordinance. I think it's more an attribute of West Orange High coming to a head, Avalon and Wedgeville, but no, there's really been no further discussion on it for a month or two.
I didn't think so either, but I thought, that's it. Did you have any, but I have something else, too.
Just for clarity for the board and anyone in the audience that may be listening, there have been, first of all, no decisions made by both staffs that we have come together and said, this is the policy that's going to be adopted. That was also misrepresentations that we've heard and seen on Facebook and other places. And certainly, any decisions will come to the critical stakeholders, including this board and the county commission, for input as well as any other input stops you request that they be made. And I don't know where the story came from with that much urgency about approval, but that certainly is not the case. And I know that the staffs have been working diligently together, but that just means it's the first step in the process to bring those recommendations back to both boards.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Mr. Chair, in regard to work sessions, I wanted just to dovetail on Ms. Cobert and Ms. Robinson's, probably everybody's, request about the Marzano evaluations and testing, but I wouldn't mind just a full rundown on where we are at this point. There have been so many changes, you know, up and down, maybe some kind of chronological cheat sheet, because, you know, a wrap-up of this year's changes, because there's been so many Q and As and F and Qs and memorandums that have come out and this and that, that it's, my head is swimming. So in that work session, if there could be just sort of an overall review, here's where we started at the beginning of the year, here's what's all changed. Because I think that's what has agitated the community as well, is that you're reading about all these changes, and then the parents come home, and my kid took, you know, intercourse test, and I thought it was, you know, eliminated and all that. So I just, I think for me, too, I would appreciate that type of depth of where we are.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Ms. Cadel.
Okay, I'm going to be the, I'm going to be our conscience. There is no way we're going to do this stuff in two hours. There is no way that we're going to attack these things and not commit as a board to sit down to multiple four- and six-hour sessions. And if we as board members are not willing to do that, we're wasting a lot of time in saying, we want this and we want that, because none of this can be done in 90 minutes or two hours. I mean, that's, that's just the reality of if you want these deep dives and if you want to look at this, it's not something that happens in 120 minutes. Okay. So on that note, to dovetail on everyone, communications on all of this is a problem. If you read the coalition follow-up from yesterday, not even the 10 districts in the coalition all talk the same language. And that's part of the problem. We probably are doing more than a lot of our neighboring districts, but it's the way that it's set. Or they said it before we did, or they went here, or they went there. There needs to be a common language. There needs to be a glossary of what that common language is, and we need to start speaking that common language. My roundtable last time, because everyone talks about data, well, I think the members who came to the roundtable and sat down with principals from high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools and understood how the data is used to create a continuum for a child's education. They all looked at it different, but we didn't hear once, we didn't hear twice, we didn't hear three times. I'm tired of my child being a data point. And we need to do a better job of explaining why it is important to do these measurements so we know that children are progressing and we can pick them up when they're missing a skill. So we have a huge communications challenge that doesn't help, that we are the media mogul magnet for the entire I-4 corridor and North and South, and nobody's talking the same language. And so I think that's the other thing. You have heard me say more than once, if computers had been around when my oldest child was in third grade, we would have known he was not processing properly and not learning to read until he started failing in fifth grade. And I spent the next seven years of his career, school career, getting him tutored, getting him assistance, because back in the days that we educated my son in the 80s, that technology wasn't there, and he was a really smart kid. And so there are some kids that are getting caught, and we're not losing them. The fact that we are looking for second graders who are gifted is phenomenal, but you know what? That's another assessment, or, you know, that's another test. The Iowa assessment, it is my personal opinion that because there's so much talk about the test that's coming out of Utah, that people believe the Iowa assessment is just like the Utah assessment. It's the assessment that came for the children in Iowa. Now, I don't know what Iowa stands for, but I'm pretty sure it's not that it was only for the children in Iowa. So once again, communication. So I've harped, sorry. I know we've got more to do, but that's my two cents.
Well, I'll just say, I agree with you. It's going to take some all-day sessions or, and real commitment by this board. You know, I will say that I hope, one thing I'd like us to think about starting with, and sometimes this doesn't always work with our board, but I'd like to think we're at a point where it will work, is for us to just start by sharing at that all-day session our perceptions of the system, what needs to change at the outset, because I know we all have opinions, and we're all out there in the trenches talking to folks, you know, an awful lot. You know, I will share with you, you know, it concerns me immensely that I think our opinion leaders on education policy are first and foremost our classroom teachers, and we have just, we've just lost them on the classroom observations and on what, how we're, and I know our hands are tied to certain extent, you know, and on the assessments, there are some things that are in our sandbox that we can't affect. You know, for example, a teacher said to me the other day, look, if my kids are performing at a high level year in, year out, why am I doing all these interim benchmark assessments? Should we be looking at if a teacher is performing at a high level whether they need to administer every assessment? But I do want to say one thing, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Moore to bring us in for a landing. Dr. Jenkins, I think you have done a masterful job, and I think our district, I don't want to make this clear, in our administration, has done a better job than any district in central Florida. And frankly, I think we've done a better job than virtually every urban district I've read about. You have not let the pendulum swing to the crazy side, okay? And some other districts have. You have not let the pendulum swing where you're asking the board to pass resolutions or make decisions that I think would cost us credibility and without naming names. I think there are some neighboring districts that have done that. We're in a tough predicament trying to walk this tightrope, but at the same time, I think this board, I'm very proud of our board, and I'm very proud, extremely proud of Dr. Jenkins and her administration. We're trying to do the responsible thing that's best for the student while at the same time trying to alleviate the burden on our children and on our teachers. So it's not to say that we haven't tried to do that, but I do think we need to take a good, hard look because we've got to recapture our teachers. You know, we just, we've got to get them back on our side on these issues, and we didn't cause a problem. I will share with you, I know someone in the opt-out crowd don't like to hear this, when it was just FCAT until three years ago, 95% of the teachers I would talk to one-on-one supported accountability and supported FCAT and supported what we were doing in the state. Now, when I talk to teachers, 95% of them are against it. And that's why we're losing parents, because they listen to the teachers and the teachers aren't with it. Now, that's not our, we didn't make that problem, but we've got to do some things as a district to get them back on our side and make them realize that we're trying to give them a degree of professionalism back and treat them like educated professionals they are again, and give them some autonomy in the classroom and with their students. Ms. Moore.
I'm going to add a comment to what I was going to say, but I agree with you, Mr. Chair. I think that a lot of the anxiety is absolutely that the children are sensing is coming from their teachers, and so I think that if we address that issue and find a way to do it, that a lot of that pressure on the children will stop. And so, Mrs. Cadel, actually, I pushed my button to respond to what you said, and I think you're absolutely right about the common vocabulary, and, but I'm just so pleased with Dr. Jenkins and the team and the position that we're in right now compared to our neighboring counties. And so my thought, and I'm curious if anybody else wants to weigh in, that some of the suggestions we've made about having an all-day session, and with Mrs. Cobert's help, especially if we're going to figure some of it out in-house with our district, and then, had you any thoughts, Mrs. Cadel, about then perhaps suggesting a session this fall with the coalition? Because the only way to get common vocabulary perhaps is going that direction, or if you had thought about how we're going to do that? Because clearly, that is an issue when we're all over the board, and the legislature did that to us by opening it up and sending things back to the district. We have a real concern if we all start going 100 different directions, and that's really dangerous. So I was going to ask you about what you thought.
You know, I almost think because Florida School Boards Association has hired the collaborative labs out of St. Pete College to do a strategic plan, I think that that's something that we all need to have. You know, when we go to Tampa, that's one of the things that we need to say over and over again. There needs to be a common language between school boards talking about it. And I think because that is already in motion, there is a May coalition meeting, this is May, there is no coalition meeting again until August, I guess. So I would say we start at FSBA, but, I mean, I'll think about it some, but Dr. Diaz and I have a lot of comments from the parents that we talk to who are parent leaders at the schools. My gut also tells me if we can just close schools, get the information, get the testing over, so it's over and the unknown is over, because I think it's the fear of the unknown. And, well, but we need to, we need to get a database to start from, and then we can react to it. Right now, right now, if you pull the plug, we don't know anything. So, school's going to be out, what, we've got three more weeks?
Well, great conversation. All right, great conversation, thank you all, really. All right, anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn for Dr. Jenkins, before we go, before we go to executive session upstairs? All right, with that, where are we meeting up in the conference room? All right, we are adjourned.